Crew and the street crew need the units. This one really doesn't go out in the field. One example of how this facilitates our operation with a machine that can handle the attachments if we're out doing pavement repair. You can grind out the pavement to be repaired with one unit with the miller on it, then you'd follow up with this with the sweeper to pick up the cuttings instead of stopping, changing out the attachments. Much streamline the operation, much more efficient, a better use of the six-man crew we do have, and a better service to the citizens to make repairs. Another thing to point out, too, is the price is extremely good, as you can see from the bids. With the trade-in, with the discount, we were budgeting about forty-seven thousand, based on some prices we've had in the past. The low bid for a is twenty-three three fifty.
Is this the only one of these we have?
We have another unit. We have a, I can't remember the name of, we have one that was, we bought in two thousand and five. As I say, to improve efficiency, it would be best to replace the unit that we have now with a more versatile and more powerful unit where we can actually team up on maintenance operations to improve our operations.
The only question I have from a standpoint of, you know, this is a Bobcat recommending a new Holland, are there issues? I mean, is it PTO's PTO kind of these devices?
The only, the only difference between the new Holland and some of the more high-priced units is some retain the ability to switch from hand control to foot control. The industry standard is going to hand controls. With the new Holland, you get your choice of either a foot or a hand.
Okay.
Most of our crew is used to the hand-controlled, and the rest doesn't adapt. So...
So that's really the only difference? I mean, as far as any of the, any of the equipment that we use with this?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yes, it's compatible, yes.
So what's the trade-in value of this?
The trade-in on this unit was, with the low bidder, was twelve thousand.
So that price of twenty-three thousand is?
Twenty-three thousand is after the trade-in. That's the cash-out for us.
How would council like to proceed?
I move we approve consent agenda item number four. Second?
Motion, Morrow, Second Freeman, that we authorize purchase of a skid steer loader from Can Quip Incorporated. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carries. New business item number one, consider holding a public hearing for the purpose of receiving comments relating to a request for waiver of the distance limitation to allow for the sale of cereal malt beverages within two hundred feet of a school, church, or library during the Festival on the Trails event. We'll have a brief introduction to this, and then we will open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, the first three items on your agenda all relate to the Festival on the Trails event, which is scheduled for Saturday, June the ninth. The Festival on the Trails Committee has petitioned, actually applied for a general retailer license to sell three-two beer at this event, which they have done in years past. Basically, if you look on your map, the location is going to be on Shawnee Street, just east of Elm. It's a different location this year than it was last year. They had a little further back on Elm Street, almost in the Washington Street area, just parallel to the kids' zone. So this year, it's moved up closer to the main stage. In order for a CMB license to be considered by the council, since the proposed location is within two hundred feet of a school, library, excuse me, and church, the Festival on the Trails Committee has petitioned the city council for a waiver of the distance limitation so they could allow the retail of cereal malt beverage. One of the requirements of, for the council to consider a waiver of distance limitation is to hold a public hearing to allow a public comment or attention to this request. A few specifics about the event. Here again, it will be held June ninth, which is a Saturday. I've showed the location on the map. The hours of operation would be twelve PM to eleven PM. Only three-two beer will be sold here again, and it'll be served within the gates of the Beer Garden, and will be consumed in that area as well. And appropriate interior security will be stationed at both entrances. This request has received approval by the police department, and they have found no reason not to grant the CMB license. I think you all, the governing body, is in receipt of a, well, actually, I'm going to hold off at this point, and if there's any questions that I can answer. We also have Tom Mertz and some other members of the Festival on the Trails Committee that are available to answer any specific questions you may have.
All right. Before we start questions, we will open the public hearing and allow anyone who wishes to speak on this request, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Don't we need to vote on whether we have a result in how this reads?
Not yet.
Not yet. There is separate action needs to take place on all three items, but the public hearing needs to be opened first to receive comments, if there is anyone that is so inclined to comment.
New business item says, consider holding the public hearing. Don't we need to vote on that?
Well, we need to open the public hearing, and that's what the mayor's done.
So...
And I think the governing body, governing body is in receipt of an email that I'm going to read into the record from Nancy Faulkner, related to this request, the waiver of distance limitation request. Dear Mayor and City Council, I am running to you to let you know of my opposition to the request of a waiver of distance limitation to allow for the sale of cereal malt beverages within two hundred feet of a school, church, or library during the Festival on the Trails event to be held June ninth, two thousand and twelve. I do not believe a family event requires cereal malt beverages to be sold near a library, church, playground, and school. We have a lot of children in this city who will be attending, and we do not need any of this to jeopardize their welfare. We have a head injury rehabilitation unit at Meadowbrook, right here in our city, which has many patients there in direct result of alcohol. I want you to know and perhaps visit, because it does ruin a person and family's lives when this happens. I work there, and I would hate to see another human being suffer. I was against Blazers getting their waiver as well, and it was granted anyway. Why do we have this ordinance if we will continue to waiver it? Blazers has survived many years successfully without alcohol. The city council approved this one, too. I do not understand your thinking, except if it is truly about money. I don't see another reason to grant these waivers when there are so many children, teens, and young adults in harm's way. I also wonder if you are truly asking us, as a citizen, for our opinion when the festival is being held three weeks after this public notice. Is already set up to have a provider of the cereal, is it already set up to have a provider of the cereal malt beverages? Is this just to appease us to say, we let you speak? I appreciate your time in reading this and in answering my questions. Thank you. Sincerely, Nancy A. Faulkner.
So she said that to you or to us?
Um, she...
I don't remember seeing that.
She explained to me that, she said, the following is a letter I have sent to the mayor and city council. I have sent you a copy, as per advice in the Gardner News, which is included in the public notice. And the date that I received it was May second, about two forty-six PM.
So what is, I mean, how do you answer those?
I responded to her.
I responded to her and advised that I would be reading it into the record at the meeting.
I mean, how do you respond to, I mean, what? Is this a, I mean, the Festival on the Trails Committee is, they are the people that are actually making the money off of this? Or is it a private company that?
There's no money made.
Well, that's right. You're on it.
Yeah, there's no money made. There's donations through private businesses, many of them local. The money is, we're not-for-profit. The money is, you know, put back into the fight for the festival next year. So, I mean, it's not a profit.
The, the money collected from the sales will go to the Festival for twenty thirteen?
Correct.
Okay. So it won't be a, it won't be catered similar to years past?
Right. In the years past, they brought in private vendors. Wally's did it one year. Last year, Brancato's did it. This year, the festival is going to get volunteers to actually serve the work at the beer tent, and they will purchase the beer, which is why they're asking for the license and the beer name.
Others here who would like to speak on the public hearing. That being the case, I would move that we, or I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing and move to discussion on the next item.
Second.
Motion Harrison, Second Morrow, that we close the public hearing. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. New business item number two, consider a request for a waiver of the distance limitation to allow for the sale of cereal malt beverages within two hundred feet of a school, church, or library during the Festival on the Trails event.
Here again, this is a waiver of distance limitation. In order for council to even consider approving a cereal malt beverage license for this particular event, a waiver of distance limitation would need to be granted to the Festival on the Trails Committee to allow for retailing near the school, church, library. Some of you may already know that code was revised, Guardian Municipal Code was revised in two thousand and seven to allow the Festival on the Trails Committee to serve cereal malt beverages on public property. So we already have that written into code, giving them permission to do that. But at this point in time, here again, location is what is causing the waiver of distance limitation to come before you for consideration.
Yeah, I know members of the committee are here to answer questions, should there be any regarding this matter. So I will open up the discussion to council.
I've got a question for Captain Moore. This has been an ongoing event. Has there been any kind of increase in, you know, traffic citations, DUI citations, drunken disorderlies in conjunction with the Festival on the Trail in previous years?
None. We've been doing this for five years. I think two thousand and seven was the first year they did it. And since then, even with some of the large crowds that we had, we've never had an incident inside the Beer Garden, or any of the crowd, so to speak, I mean, at this event.
Captain Moore, do you plan to have any, like, increased patrols or things during the event, during the times at the Beer Garden? Or we increase?
I have over forty officers at this event that night. That's not including what's going to be on the street, the additional officers we're going to put on the street. But I'll have forty additional officers here that night, just working this event.
Who pays for that? Do they pay us back? So we, how much does that come to?
I have no idea. Well, a lot of that's, I mean, over half of that's the Sheriff's Department coming in to help us.
But we have to pay for that, pay them back?
Nope. Nope.
So twenty of them will come from us, or twenty will come from you? Is that overtime?
Mm-hmm.
It says appropriate interior security will be stationed. Is that, is that what you're talking about?
No.
Not private?
We do not, we do not do anything inside the Beer Garden. We've already, I mean, I've been in most of the meetings that they've had with the, with the festival, and they've been given the guidelines that they are going to have their own personnel inside the Beer Garden and at the gates checking for proper IDs and things. I do have people stationed close to that, that area. So in the event of trouble, we can have rapid intervention. So, but like I said, in the five years we've been doing it, we've never had to.
And is that, is that the case, that there's going to be security paid for by them inside? Or they're just people checking IDs?
We have volunteers. I mean, I'll let Tom sort of make that, so I'll let him...
Yeah, I'll have the committee come up and make it.
Now, we have volunteers already lined up to provide ID checking and be bouncers or whatever. I've recruited some legitimate, Glenn Stockton, Mark Sainer, a number of other well-known citizens around town that have agreed to perform those duties.
But they're not really security guards?
No.
But we've never had that.
You never had security?
I just said appropriate interior security will be stationed at both entrances. I'm just asking where that is. What is that?
I mean, if people check for ID?
Everyone will be checked for ID, and they will be given a bracelet. And only people with bracelets will be able to consume beverages within the area.
So the plan is to not allow beverages to leave that area?
Correct.
Can they bring food in?
The way it's been, the way it's been at every festival, it's a contained area. We're sensitive to not being on the school's half of the street. The Presbyterian Church is well aware of it. They're supportive of it. And, you know, we're in a situation with the police where if we get into a crowd situation, Jim doesn't really want us to handle it. He wants us to, you know, give them a holler and have them come in and assist or whatever, so.
Are the, is the library going to be open during that period?
No. The Beer Garden will not even open till five o'clock.
Oh, I thought it said twelve to eleven.
The festival operates from twelve to eleven. The Beer Garden will not even open till five.
But it all occurs on city streets?
Correct.
Did anyone else on the council receive any sort of input, negative or positive, beyond the email that we all received? Ms. Faulkner? Anyone else?
I didn't ask you?
No.
Okay.
And so the church, you have some document that says that the church is supportive of it, or they don't, they don't, they're not going to fight it?
The church, the church is very supportive of the festival being at that location.
But not necessarily of the liquor?
I actually serve on the session of the Presbyterian Church. And the church is very supportive of the festival. The church is very aware the alcohol is being served. But it serves as a very good attraction to get people where our church exists, you know, for people who may not be aware, you know, it's not, we're not in a high-traffic area or whatever, and they view any of the events, and this event, as being positive. They will actually host the handicap seating on the front steps of the church.
Do other festivals allow these things? Old settlers comes to mind. Is that, do they?
Most, we are one of the few festivals that requires a fenced-in Beer Garden. Most festivals allow the citizens to walk freely throughout the event or whatever, and carry their beer throughout, you know, throughout the event. We're one of the few events that has a fenced-in restricted area for alcohol consumption.
So how do we answer this Faulkner's, you know, question of question of?
We are very sensitive to people being hurt, or people over-consuming. You know, we take out event insurance for the event. I mean, we're very sensitive to the issue of people consuming too much alcohol.
When does the, when does the kids' zone close?
Five.
It closes at five. So it closes when the Beer Garden opens. How about the food? Are they, is that intended to keep?
We want them to continue operating until the main act starts at eight-thirty or nine.
Okay. And then the evening events, the only event then beginning in the evening will be food and bands?
Well, and the other band.
The Brandon Miller Band?
Brandon Miller's Band, star, yeah, will have a preact.
And this location, is the second time it's been at this location in the history of the festival? Is that correct?
Well, all the, the stage, when the city did it and the chamber did it, they had the stage in the Johnson County City parking lot.
Library parking lot, and the Beer Garden was along Shawnee, right?
Yeah.
When it was moved here, the Beer Garden was off of the...
But when that happened, we also had a Beer Garden in the back. There, well, we...
Last year, it was in the back.
Last year, we had a center, a large Beer Garden in the center. Previous years, we've had multiple Beer Gardens.
That's true.
Now, we have one Beer Garden, and in previous years, they've served alcohol much longer than the five, than just, it's basically been all day. So that's been continued as well. I mean, so there have been some changes. But Larry, to answer your question, I mean, I responded to Mrs. Faulkner, and from my perspective, I suggested that the festival is a festival for the citizens of Gardner, and I suggested that she provide her feedback to Todd Winters, who's the chairman this year, as well as any other, you know, if any other citizen has a concern about whether beer should be served or not, I think that they should go to the festival and do that. I think from our, from my perspective, our, my job in doing this is, what does the public want? And, I mean...
If we, if you want us to shut down where all the police reports and accident reports were, then we need to shut down the kids' zone, because all of our accidents have happened in the kids' zone. All of our medical requirements, all of our calls for medical care, and police, and, and have all happened in the kids' zone, with kids on those inflatables or whatever. So, I mean, the accidents that have happened at the festival have all, so far, have all been related to the kids' zone. So if you're worried about safety and that, then maybe we need to shut the kids' zone.
You'll have to answer to my four-year-old if you do that, so don't be silent or...
On top of that, you know, I think one of Ms. Faulkner's main points is, if we're going to grant a waiver for Wally's, and we're going to grant a waiver for the Festival on the Trails, is when does, where does it stop? Well, you know, waivers are granted on a case-by-case basis. So, you know, I don't think that we draw a line in the sand, especially at a, at a community event that has the support of the police.
And if we lose, if we lose control out of the crowd, I would not expect you guys to grant to this next year. I mean, not to say, I mean, if, if this thing were to boil over or whatever and become, we're very conscious of having an ongoing program, you know, that will be continuous. I mean, we're, we're not just a number of people that are wanting to throw a big drunk party.
Right. But what is, I was going to say on the, on the waiver, is that a state requirement that we have, that we have a limitation, or is that a state?
It has nothing to do with it since we're selling three-two beer. They only get involved if they sell, they're selling strong beer or liquor.
Okay. So, so that is, that is strictly a local order?
The only payment the state has to do with it is the event has to pay twenty-five dollars for their CMB sale.
Okay. Go ahead, Larry.
Let's, let's take another example of another festival, which would be the Johnson County Fair. There's no, there's no liquor served there, no cereal malt beverages, are there?
No.
Nope.
And how many officers do we have, Captain Moore, for those events?
They're strictly handled by the Sheriff's Department.
And how many do you think they deploy for those?
Probably thirty, twenty-five to thirty a night.
So probably at least, you know, three-quarters of what we would, so there's at least ten extra officers for the liquor component, and it's a much smaller event, I would guess. I mean...
I wouldn't say it's directly for the, for the liquor component. It's because of the area that we're covering.
Well, I mean, this area is smaller than the fairgrounds, is it not?
Well, when you go from here to the fairgrounds, it's a little bit bigger than the fairgrounds.
And what restrictions are there on people who over and by? I mean, is there, there's no, is it up to the person that you have as a volunteer to say enough's enough, or?
The plan will be if we see someone that is over, even if they walk into the place, and we feel like they have overconsumed prior to even arriving at the festival, we do not have to give them a risk ban.
And that's a requirement for insurance as well?
No, that's our own personal choice.
And to answer Chris's comments, I mean, the difference is, I think, that Wally's place was open during hours where these other places would also be open, and it's a continuous thing. I mean, it's forever, and this is a one-time event. I mean, I'm not, I'm still not sold on the, in the, I mean, I actually, I actually like the idea of, you know, having these, these, well, I guess I should say, I don't, I don't have a problem, not approved as far as the alcohol is concerned, but I don't like the fact that the city is exposed to the risk, and, you know, the other festivals, namely the Johnson County Fair, come off without a hitch without it. And especially if we're going to have to pay officers that overtime hours.
We would have officers...
We would have that many officers if they had alcohol or not. I'm not going to bring an extra five to seven thousand people in a very contained area like this without additional coverage, just for safety's sake.
So, yeah, those folks would be there anyway. And does the Windott County Fair, they serve alcohol, I believe, that they're, and they're, I know that they can in their fairgrounds. The reason, I mean, it's the Fair Board that prohibits the sale, or the consumption of alcohol on the grounds, because the first year, there was a wine evening associated with it.
It's just a long establishment.
Yeah. And that was, so we couldn't have that on the fairgrounds.
I, I mean, I would have not thought twice about this if she had not written that letter. But she makes some valid points about, I think, what is our responsibility, as much fun as it might be for the people.
I can speak on behalf of the entire Festival Board that we take it very serious.
I bet you do, just like I, I thought Wally. I mean, it wasn't any thing on him. I just think that it's, it's bad policy to have, you know, to allow those things, especially when they're, you know, prohibited by, by the ordinance unless we grant a waiver. I mean, she, she makes a good point. Why do we have these laws if we can waiver them? You know, in the case of Wally, for, forever, I mean, effectively, and during hours that these other facilities will be in operation. So, I mean, I don't want to throw a wet blanket on the party, but she made some great points.
Definitely noted.
Are there any other questions? How would the council like to proceed?
I move we approve a request for a waiver of distance limitation to allow for the sale of cereal malt beverages within two hundred feet of a school, church, or library during the Festival on the Trails event.
Second.
Motion, Morrow, Second Freeman, that we approve a waiver of distance limitation to allow for sale of cereal malt beverages within two hundred feet of a school, church, or library during the Festival on the Trails. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. So the final item related to this is to consider approving a general retailer license, allowing the Festival on the Trails Association to retail cereal malt beverages for consumption on premises for their event to be held June ninth, two thousand and twelve.
Correct. This is the actual license that would be required to retail.
And this license is good only for that?
For that day. It's actually the license, the CMB is good for, from January first through December thirty-first.
Okay.
But this is a temporary special event permit for that day only.
Okay. All right. I know we've discussed a lot on the previous. Are there any questions regarding this item?
I move we approve a general retailer license, allowing the Festival on the Trails Association to retail cereal malt beverages for consumption on the premises for the Festival on the Trails event to be held on June ninth, two thousand and twelve.
Second. Motion, Morrow, Second Freeman, that we approve a general retail, retailer license for the Festival on the Trails Association for June ninth, two thousand and twelve. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you, Doreen. Thank you, gentlemen. New business item number four, consider continuing the conditional use permit, twelve dash, CUP twelve dash zero-one, for the Russell Oil and Gas Lease to the June eighteenth, two thousand and twelve city council meeting. Amy?
All right. This is pretty much the exact same situation that we had at the last meeting. The lease is still not ready yet, so we haven't had a chance to review that. As a result, since we've already continued this a few times, we want to go ahead and continue it all the way to June eighteenth, instead of to the June fourth meeting, to give them a full month to try to get everything together and pile up. If it's not ready by that meeting, we would probably recommend that they withdraw and resubmit or something along those lines, or, or take action regardless, just to keep this from dragging on forever. But at this time, we do feel that the lease is close to being ready, so we do recommend that it get postponed for just one month.
What's the, is the whole up on our side or their side?
It's on their side. It's an issue between the property owner and the oil drilling company.
Why are there so many hours being spent by Jim for this project if it's on their side?
And are we going to receive any reimbursement for those expenses?
The reason for all of the hours, Jim, do you want to comment on some of that?
Well, initially, the reason was they came in and applied for a hundred and ninety oil and gas wells, which was the first time anything... which was the first time anything like that had happened in the city of Gardner, to my knowledge. So, it was quite an extraordinary issue for us to address. We didn't have any expertise on the staff in that regard, so we had to assemble quickly and try to get a handle on it. We were able to bring another oil and gas attorney in who was able to get it reduced from the full size of the track, which is close to 700, 800 acres, down to 160 acres, and from 190 wells down to 10 wells. So, it was, it was a real benefit to the city to be able to get that reduced, so we didn't have to address the full 190 wells. I told them at the first time they appeared here at this hearing that because we approved a benefit district on this entire track, and there were special assessments due on the track, if they put a great deal of oil and gas wells on the property, it would make it more difficult to ever develop as a residential track. So, we were very happy when they agreed to reduce it down to 10 wells. But I still wanna see the lease between the landowner and the developer, and the main issue we're concerned about is what's the landowner's right to terminate that lease if development should start up again here in Gardner and that track was, is developed as residential. The landowner is obviously looking for some revenue to help pay for the special assessments. I think we have close to $4 million in assessments that'll be due over the period of, of the benefit district. So, with no development going on, they're looking for some revenue, but we're looking to make sure that the property will develop at some point and the assessments will be paid. So, that's why we're very concerned about this lease. And we, we don't want to have it considered by the council till we see the lease, and they're, you know, it's a big issue, big issue between the two parties. The developer doesn't wanna terminate the wells. They're gonna put a lot of money and effort into drilling wells and developing them, and so it's, it's quite a substantial issue between those two parties.
Is, if we were to deny them consideration for their conditional use permit, they'd have to resubmit. Would this put us in an actionable position in any way?
Well, unfortunately, we have some, some ordinances presently on the book that, that allow for oil and gas wells. So, it's, it does put us in a more difficult position to, you know, deny these wells.
Are they ordinances that still require that they obtain a conditional use permit?
Yes, they're required to, to obtain the conditional use permit.
So...
So, they could deny it?
We could, we could deny it and, and they could refile and, and possibly get it correct this time?
You, you do have the option to deny the issue that makes this particular situation more difficult, is the benefit district. If there wasn't a benefit district there, then we wouldn't be having this conversation.
Because, because of the cost? Is that what you're saying?
Well, because this is the owner's plan to pay the assessments on the benefit district. So, if we deny that, then he would...
He's not gonna pay.
Potentially. I mean, we don't know what the future holds, but it certainly makes it more of a difficult situation.
What is our, can somebody tell me if, if 10 wells is going to produce enough crude to, to pay their assessments?
There are 20...
Well, I think at this point, they're not certain, they haven't, there's some old wells on the property, on the western part of the property that have been abandoned and that really were non-producing, I think, of any economic amount. And I think the developers aren't, or the oil and gas company aren't really sure how productive this property's gonna be. So, they're taking, I think, a, a look at exactly how much they wanna commit to and how much are they willing to put on, you know, into the property with there's some provision in the lease that it may be terminated at some point? You know, what's the buyout right? That's, that's the difficult issue between the developer and the landowner.
But they have also...
What are they doing with your...
Sorry. They have also made it clear that if they drill the 10 wells in those successful, they do plan to come back for another permit to do more wells.
More wells on the same property or more wells on the other 600 acres or whatever that number was?
It's 560 acres total. They would start on the southeast portion of that. The additional wells could be, I can't recall exactly if they would fit additional ones in that area, or if they would go ahead and start expanding to the other areas. I haven't seen if there's two plans, so I'm not sure what that looks like.
If we were to deny this, and they had to resubmit, that would have to go back through the Planning Commission as well?
Yes. Now, the, the issue with, we do have a limitation on successive applications, which means they could not reapply for substantially the same property and application within 12 months unless the city council waives that limitation. So, there's that issue as well. But yes, right now, we're just recommending continuing it so that we can work through all of these issues with the applicant present. At the June 18th meeting, you'll have the opportunity to approve or deny at that time.
What are they doing with the conditional use permit? What, what does that, what specifically are they doing out there?
The conditional use permit would allow oil and gas extraction.
Okay.
So, they would be drilling wells...
So, they are actually exploring?
Yes.
Okay.
Do, do we have any idea if the, we've had discussions with their attorneys, I saw the invoices here recently. Are, are these people going to be unable to pay their assessments if, if they don't extract oil from these wells?
We don't have any idea of the answer to that. Or, I think the last I knew, there was, there was no liens against the property. But obviously, at the time, the, they requested that we put the forced main in, development was, you know, rapidly happening here in Gardner. And after that, obviously, it stopped. And so, they're in a period of time where they have no revenue coming in, no sales of the property.
We, at the time, also discouraged touring that property. I mean, we, we incurred, we said that we'd be happy to promise and so on, but they're very persistent that the infrastructure be put in place, and so it was done. You know, the concern I have with regard to these, that we recently, I see recently a few years ago, had a similar issue just north of Megan Valley with regard to oil rights on that land, and the attorneys for the oil companies made it very clear that they were willing to spend a good deal of money to protect their, protect their rights. And, you know, so I, I guess from my perspective, we wanna get this, we don't wanna do anything that's gonna cause any future litigation, certainly, but I think we also wanna, we also wanna be put in a position that we can, that we can limit this to as small a, an area as possible and be very diligent. Because, I mean, realistically, if, and you've seen them on the outside of town, I mean, these are the gas and oil what it is today, they're going up...
Everywhere.
Everywhere. And that essentially makes that land not developable for anything else. And, you know, you don't wanna, you don't wanna deny revenue to landowners, certainly, but I think, you know, when it, when it's in within a planned growth area, we need to be concerned about.
Is there anybody here from the Russell family?
No, they're expecting this to be continued, so I don't believe they have anyone present tonight. That's why I'm recommending that we continue this discussion to the June 18th meeting, so they can be present for it.
I, I, I'm the same feelings about, you know, continuing, continuing, continuing. I think, I think we really need to say, you know, if we can't figure it out by June 18th, then we need to...
I would agree with that.
We need to start again. And I mean, I'm not opposed to granting a waiver, the 12-month limit, but, you know, I just think that, you know, if we keep continuing it, that we get nowhere with it.
So, can I ask you, because I guess, what I struggle with is if we're, if on June 18th they come forward with this lease, I don't feel like we, we've had much discussion about what, what our stance should be on that. So, I'm kind of like, okay, why wouldn't we approve this? Because if we're going to approve on June 18th, well, okay. But I also feel between now and June 18th, we need to understand, what is it that we think we should be doing? Because, I mean, to Dave's point, I mean, if I'm a, if I'm that landowner and I can make this money on oil that's found out there, I'm not gonna be happy. I, you know, I don't care if it's in a planned growth area or not. You know, quite frankly, I own the land, I should be able to do with it as I see fit. And if we can't, if we as a council haven't had discussions and we haven't decided what are gonna be the parameters around that, then June 18th can come, and I think we're gonna be sitting here asking the same question.
Right. And at that point, if we have questions, we can certainly continue it again on our behalf, depending on what we see. But, you know, I think another thing that, that we need to consider in this is that it's, the landowner is not drilling, the landowner is essentially leasing their right, leasing the, the rights to everything below the surface. And that, you know, the length of time that lease occurs and so on, and it just creates challenges for future development when, when that happens.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is if we don't have clear expectations as to what, what we think those challenges are and how we wanna mitigate those and what our, our parameters are gonna be that we're gonna set in every case, then June 18th is gonna come, and I, I mean, we're just gonna continue to...
Started down that path a little bit, where it's gone from the 160 to the 10, where Amy and Jim have worked together and said, this just isn't what, you're not gonna be able to get through at this point, we need to wrap by that. So, it's gonna set expectations. It would take ordinance imposed to change some of those things that you're talking about, but that lease sets a precedent that we go back to another rainbow.
Yeah, but who, who's got that part of it? I mean...
We're right, but then we have to go.
I'm sorry. To answer some of your questions, the, the Planning Commission did discuss at length, they held a public hearing, discussed it at length, and they did actually add some stipulations to what staff had recommended as well. You will see all of those on the 18th, assuming everything moves forward at that time. As far as which direction to go, I think a lot of that depends on the lease because of this difficult situation with the benefit district. And so, as far as, that's why we keep continuing it, because we want to have a chance to review that lease so that we can, as staff, say, okay, we're ready to move forward with this. Because depending on how that lease reads, we may or may not be as favorable to approving the conditional use permit.
Do we wanna, do we wanna put the stipulation that we see this at work session prior to?
Yeah, I mean, because, Amy, what you just said, which I, I understand. So, basically, though, what, what I'm hearing is that because they owe us money for a benefit district, we may have a different decision than we would somebody who has land free and clear. And to me, that's not right. That's not a consistent message. I mean, I think we need a consistent policy on what, what we're, what we would do.
So, you're looking at just the issue of oil wells in general, then?
Right. I mean, that's really what this is about. I mean, now, yes, there's a special assessment on that land, but what if there wasn't? You know, I mean, would we think differently? I, I mean, to me, it's, it's a policy issue as to what, what do we want that?
Right. There, there are multiple issues here. There's the broader policy issue, and then there's also the specific issues of assuming that you were okay with the, the broader policy issue in general, then that's where we get down into the, the issues of the lease and making sure that the city's protected. So, that's what, because staff had recommended approval and the Planning Commission did recommend approval with stipulations, that's why we're working through these issues now before we bring it to you. Had the Planning Commission recommended denial, we probably wouldn't be worried about that right now. So...
Can we, because, I guess my concern is, I mean, is obviously, we wanna have some conversation, we wanna understand what it says and talk about it, and talk about ramifications, whether it's this specifically or that in general, prior to any consideration of approval. So, if we say, if we say continuation to June 18th, that means that at some point before 6:00 PM on June 18th, that's, that's the end of the discussion. You know, I mean, and that, and that's my concern, is that, you know, we're gonna consider it on June 18th, but no offense to the legal profession, but...
You wanna have a, you wanna have a study session for a general educational, you know, session on oil and gas and whether you should or should not allow that within the city limits of Gardner, Kansas, that's fine. But not addressing this specific application at that study session, that needs to come to, directly to the council at a regular council meeting.
Right.
But I think what you're asking is, I don't know enough about oil and gas and what our policy is and what the parameters are and the good and the bad of it. I wanna know more, and you can certainly do that at a study session. When you, we can bring the experts in and, that we've already had at the Planning Commission, and they can, within a pretty short time, educate you on exactly what, what's transpiring here.
Can I, what, what infrastructure is there that, that was used to finance, I mean, the, the city's benefit district is currently financing? I mean, what has been done?
It's a forced main sewer. We put a forced main sewer in. The ground slopes to the north and the plant is at the south, and the forced main brings the sewage uphill back to the plant.
Is that it? Is that all that we've...
There's, there's basically a series of gravity sewers going to the lift station, and as Jim said, a forced main that pushes it back uphill to the plant.
But, I mean, knowing that we already did that and committed, you know, and that money is, we're on the hook for it and they don't pay, why, why would we ever think that we could change the rules and then say, we'll just take that stuff out because you guys may or may not be able to pay, and you can go ahead and drill for oil? I mean, it seems like they've already committed to a subdivision there, and we don't, why, do we have any obligation after that? After they've, after we've done what they asked the first time and incurred $4 million of the debt? That they may or may not pay?
It's 100% benefit district. The land is there to support the debt. If they didn't pay, there may be a short period of time and we might have to make some, some payments, but eventually, the land would be sold in repayment of that debt.
Right. And we have already paid that, are we not? I mean, isn't that what the six and a half mils helped pay off before?
Yes, I appreciate it.
Right. No, but we've already, haven't we already adjusted to the fact that we're already paying that? And we have been for two years?
Yes.
At what point do we own it?
Now, wait a minute now. All the, the temporary debt that's been out there after it was constructed until we did the assessment was added to the amount that they owe the city. It'll all be paid back, and their first payment isn't due yet. We have, we fully expect them to make their payments.
As they show.
Yeah, that was the agreement.
That was the settlement.
Right.
The settlement was that they...
They would pay.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause they sued us.
Right. But I'm trying to remember what the reason they, they sued us and how, I mean, they were always gonna have to pay.
Well, that's my question, that they eventually will have to pay because someone will, they'll sell their property. Their property will be sold.
Exactly. And that's, and that's the thing, that's their risk. If they don't pay, their property will be sold at a, at a very low cost, they will take a, a bigger loss, and somebody else will come in there, and what will they do? They'll put housing in there like it was meant to, to be in the first place. Because, because, I mean, think about it, if the land goes for, you know, some ridiculously low price, $2,000 an acre, then somebody can make a living off of that as a developer and put housing in there. And there's no reason for us to even drill for it.
But we have no indication that they're not gonna make their payments as required.
Right. But it, all of these discussions hinge or, you know, contingent on, on our belief that they may not.
The other thing to catch that Councilman Harrison would like to have is on our policy regarding oil and gas leases within the city limits. And again, I, I, I agree that that's a good position and a good discussion to have because, you know, the, the situation that occurred at, at Megan Valley, we moved up to a point that was already there, and, you know, we were, we were essentially, we had no options at that point, and so, you know, we have wells. And, you know, this is a, a conversation that, that has been raised with, with Johnson County, you know, because these wells are going in within our planned growth area, and the presence of these wells makes growth, limits the growth, limits the type of, of growth that can happen in those areas. So, that is something that we, we as a county, and, and, you know, if the council's philosophy is okay, yeah, let's, you know, I mean, you go down to, you know, Dallas and Allen and Plano, and there's a five-bedroom brick next to a, a double wide and a, and a pump in the back. You know, I mean, so, I mean, they, they coexist elsewhere. It's not... It's not, but again, I agree that this is probably something we should have prior to that discussion. And I think in fairness to the landowner and the folks that are trying to get the lease, they need to have a sense of what the council's direction was in our policy.
My problem with this, I understand what Larry's saying, I understand what Christie's saying, I certainly agree with what Christie's saying, but at the same time, this conditional use permit has been a bit of a moving target. Hundred ninety wells, ten wells, we can drill, we can't drill, we might want to drill more. I think that if they want a conditional use permit, they need to get their ducks in a row, resubmit, go back through the planning commission. If we, if what they want to resubmit is not significantly different from what the planning commission passed the last time, then maybe we give them a waiver on the twelve-month rule, if that can be accommodated. But otherwise, get your ducks in a row and then move forward. There's nothing to say that this isn't going to be moving off again until July, and we're going to have, we're going to have budget and work sessions about, you know, the oil and gas and budget and council meetings about the oil and gas. And, you know, I think that it's not incumbent upon us to understand what they're proposing. I think it is incumbent upon them that it is easy and straightforward what they are proposing. I'm prepared to make a motion to table all conversation or deny the conditional use permit, or I'm going to need a little parliamentary procedure there.
I think, and, I mean, obviously, any motion can come up. I guess the concern I have is making that motion without the applicant present. So, I mean, you know, I think, in voting on it without giving the applicant an opportunity to speak, and, you know, that's the only, I mean, that's the only caveat. But, you know, however council would like to proceed, I think, but I agree that we need to do, this can't be continued forever, and we need to have a, we need to have a discussion about policy regarding these items, and that needs to happen at the first opportunity.
Mike Press. Comments, suggestions?
Well, I think that you need to, as you rightly done, separate the issues. The general idea of the development of oil and gas in the city limits versus this specific application. So we can have a work session, we can talk about the current state of ordinances and the rules and things regarding oil and gas and what people can do with their property and what the parameters of getting a conditional use permit to explore and to drill are in general terms, and we can do that as an educational process. And then you can take this up at the appropriate time. I would actually take action now, as suggested, and continue it until the eighteenth, and then perhaps at an intervening work session, we can talk about oil and gas in general.
Okay. It would be helpful, I think, too, if the planning commission could be present at that work session, if at all possible. I know we've got one work session between now and the, in June eighteenth, but I think there's not notice that we can get them. I mean, it would be helpful to have them part of that discussion since they're the initial body to hear these requests.
Wow. In which case, I would say we continue it to the eighteenth, but don't take action on the eighteenth anyway. Move it to a work session in July, action on the second meeting in July would make more sense. You know, but the bottom line is, is that these folks need to come in, organize, be able to make a simple and compelling case.
And I would say, one of the reasons I wouldn't support tabling this is because honestly, I think if they came here today and had all their ducks in a row, I personally, I don't think that I have enough knowledge to be able to say what's right or wrong either way. I mean, so from my perspective, I don't think that we're any more prepared to make those decisions or have those discussions.
Again, you have to understand that you haven't heard the report from the planning commission who has heard that, because it hasn't been called forth because we keep postponing this at their request. So at the appropriate time, everything the planning commission considered, all the conversation, all the discussion, you'll have. So there will be an educational process when you consider it at any time. But we can enhance that by talking about it at an intervening work session in general terms as well.
What's the harm in just letting this thing lapse and having them come back and do, go through the process again? What is, what are we worried about there?
What's the benefit to that?
I mean, I think it says that we're not ready to make any more decisions about oil and gas wells in Gardner within city limits and that, you know, especially for people who have already put in, or, you know, for whom we've already installed sewers in. I mean, I guess that's what I'm having a problem with, is why, why are we even going, you know, talking about this if the property is properly prepared and developed for another use? We have a legal, it would seem, we have a legal reason to say, you know, maybe future wells in other locations, but not this one. And if they don't pay...
Well, Larry, you've got an ordinance on your books that allows oil and gas wells in the city.
Do we have any oil and gas wells within city limits right now?
Sure.
Yeah, there's the other side of it.
Yeah.
And you have a property right, you know, of the owner to do what they want on their own property.
I mean, to me, it's no different, although, I mean, I understand the use of it is different, but then what we had the discussion about the church going in, out here by the high school, and, you know, that was supposed to be residential, we would have gotten a lot more property tax from that, but do we have the right to tell the developer, I'm sorry, you can't sell the land of the church because it's not taxed? I mean, it...
So do other cities allow oil and gas drilling within city limits? I mean, that's a big problem, I think, if, is that the case?
There are cities that do. However, it's not a very common issue because normally, they're out in agricultural areas, which usually are not incorporated.
So which cities in Johnson County allow oil and gas drilling within city limits?
I'm not aware of any specific...
We're the only one?
I'm not sure that we're the only one, but there's a chance of that, yes.
This really hasn't been an issue until this last oil and gas boom that's happened. I mean, we haven't dealt with oil and gas wells, I can't recall. And it's this last boom that's got everybody, you know, putting wells everywhere. This developer is a large developer, and they've bought ground outside. The county has no restrictions.
All you have to do is drive to Silver Ridge Park, and you can't, there's not a lot out there that's going to have wells in it right now, and they're neighboring lots, although this one happened to Yanex because of the benefit district.
And I have to say, this developer, once we got our team together, the developer's been very good to work with. I mean, they could have said, we want one hundred and ninety wells, approve it or don't approve it. They've been willing to reduce it all the way down to a part of the tract, ten wells. I mean, we've had some good cooperation once we got our act together.
But they also know that once they put ten wells in, it's, there's not going to be many houses built in that area, right? I mean, they got their foot in the door.
Well, that's the issue of the lease. How long, at what point can the landowner say, I'm ready to buy you out and terminate those leases and go ahead and develop as a residential development?
I mean, do we ever expect a residential development from a place that has oil rigs?
Oh, yeah, it happens.
Where, has it happened anywhere recently here or in this area?
Well, you can go to cities like Houston and where they've got gas wells all over town. I mean, there's gas under, you know, most of those cities. So it happens all the time. If they're plugged correctly and you know the location of them, you can develop, you know, residential around it, but...
But right now, we have the ability to have a discussion about whether we should allow oil drilling, oil and gas drilling within the city limits. And even though they already own the property, even though they've already, you know, started the process to convert a residential development into an oil and gas drilling area, we could still legally say, we've changed our mind, we don't want to do that anymore. We're going to change them.
Merely, you've got an ordinance on your subject of litigation.
Last thing I'm asking, is that we...
We can change the ordinance, though, right?
Well, yeah.